The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Conway, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Cohn. Twenty-three, present.
Quarant being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. We spin with our regular order of business to take up our courtesy resolution calendar. Move for adoption of a courtesy resolution calendar, entertain a second on that motion, second about Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Aldermen from the twenty-first would you like to approach the dais? Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I am here today to present a resolution in honor of Anthony Lamar Smith, the slain brother of December 2011, and we are blessed today to be with his parents. It's extremely difficult to talk about advancing public safety, especially when race is involved. Time and time and again, we see the same situations or the same scenario where a young black man or any person of color is shot down by a police officer and they walk free or they get a non-guilty The African-American community wants to believe so badly that our lives actually matter that even when this verdict came down a week ago, in the back of our minds and in the back of our hearts, we all knew what the verdict was going to be. But due to our optimistic spirit and due to the belief that we wanted to believe that black lives actually does matter, we was clinging on to the inclination that Jason Stockly would be guilty. However, that was not the case. It's been six years since Anthony Lamar Smith's killing, and his mother had to wait six years for justice, which she still did not get. So I invited her here today to let her know that the City of St. Louis and the Board of Aldermen shares her pain, her frustration, and her deep unsatisfaction with the turnout of everything that has happened. So we have a resolution, and I will hope that one of my colleagues call on to be embanked. But I would not read it in totality, I will only read it in part. Whereas Anthony Lamar Smith was born to Annie Denise Smith on May 19, 1987, in St. Louis, Missouri, Anthony was a firstborn child of Miss Smith. He had three syllables. Anthony and his brothers enjoyed playing sports with other neighborhood children. And whereas Anthony attended Wrestling House Association, Ashland Elementary School, Fergo Elementary School, Beaumont and Roosevelt High Schools, he continued his education informally by feeding his love for reading, traveling, and making connections with local artists and musicians. Whereas Anthony's dream was to become an artist and a professional clothing designer. He loved children and was looking forward to the positive life changes he was going to make in order to begin working with undeserved children in his community. He had a fine love for arts. Whereas Anthony Lamar Smith lost his life on December 20 of 2011, his death has sparked a universal cry for justice and accountability. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to remember Anthony Lamar Smith. Now present this resolution to his mother, Miss Ann Denise Smith, and his father, Mr. Darvell.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. I honor the parents of Mr. Smith, and my word is always that no one has the right to be the judge and the jury in the execution of no one individual. Neither does an individual should have the right as a judge to make a decision on a case such as this, so would you please add my name to the resolution?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderwoman from the first.
Members of the Board, first of all, I'd like to extend my deepest sympathy to his parents. I've been fighting for young kids since the 1980s when I first became a public defender and went down to Juvenile and they had to drag me away from it, trying to keep young folks from getting in trouble, and then when they were in trouble, making sure that their rights were respected. When I left Juvenile, we had one public defender, we had five public defenders when I left because we tried so many cases, and it's all about defending the rights, our constitutional rights, that weren't originally for us but that are now. And I want to add my name, and I also want you to know that I am furiously writing legislation because the reason why the judge got away with doing that is because of the way we don't elect our judges in the City of St. Louis. So we, as legislators, have failed you, and I want to extend my apology as part of that group. But I'm going to do everything I can now to look at holding police responsible and judges responsible and making sure that we have all the rights so that this does not happen to another young black man, and please add my name.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Add Alderwoman from the first. Alderwoman from the sixth.
Sir President, I would just as well like to extend my condolences to the family, thank the Aldermen from the twenty-first for this resolution, and make a motion that Resolution 139 be passed and banked.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the sixth, seconded by Alderwoman from the fifteenth, that we pass Resolution 139 and bank. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change and prepare another copy of the resolution and bank.
So noted.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the tw- um, where's the resolution? You know, I'm a father of four, so I know the pain, I can understand the pain and suffering and how difficult this is for you. So you have my heartfelt condolences and understand that we stand with you at this time. You can hear from some of the members of the Board of Aldermen, you know, just how hard this is, not just for the entire City of St. Louis, but this Board and their families, everybody's feeling this. This resolution is the highest honor the Board has to give any organization or individual. So when you look back in history at this time and you see the changes that has happened so that we have a criminal justice system that's fair to everyone that comes in contact with it, and we have a police department that works better with its citizens, you're going to see amongst those records your son's name, and know that he's passed his way and that he ushered on some change in our city and across this nation, because this is going to be a better nation, because we won't forget what happened here on the streets of the City of St. Louis. So let's give them a big round of applause and thank you.
My wife lost her voice, I'm just speaking for her. She just wanted to thank everybody for the support. She glad the body cameras is here now. She was saying that if that was her before, like after her son got killed, then the other children wouldn't have been killed, so just wanted to thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That, we turn to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board, my honored guests, and all those who won't be, names won't be called, Percy Green, Romi, Dave Sweeney, Mr. Slaughter, and all you guys on this side, especially you, Alana Green. God bless.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have my honored guests, three distinguished individuals, Sheila Jones with Ameren, Missouri, Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T, and Talib Dean Elamie.
Alderwoman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to introduce my special guest, Jeff Abusi with Regional Strategies. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the twentieth.
Sir President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my special guest today Tyson Pruitt of the Comptroller's Office.
Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest today Dave Sweeney of Lewis Rice, Earl Strother of Parrot Corporation, and Lou Hamilton. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce my special guest, Ms. Antonette Cuzzin, the principal of Beaumont's School, High School. Jeff Abusi, and Al with Local 73, Anthony Lancia, and the group, with Group Carpenter's representatives.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my honored guests this morning, Jeff Hans, Todd Hake, and Ray Schwagman from the Carpenter's Regional Council. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my special guest today Richard Kellid and Fred Seersey from the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President. I'd like to have as my special guest Labor's International Local Representative, Clinton McBride, and I'd also like to re-recognize President Demetrius Alfred from Local 73.
Alderman from the eighth.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to recognize Mr. Lou Hamilton, who's with us today.
Any further introductions? Any further inductions? Also have with us today Nancy Diamond. Alderman from the tenth, like wraps up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, as we're gathered here on September 22nd, which is the first day of fall. I hope you enjoy the 97-degree temperatures we're experiencing today. It was on this day, this is also National Ice Cream Cone Day, made famous by two or three people, but actually made famous to the world here at the 1904 World's Fair. But most importantly, in 1970, Monday Night Football debuted, and in 1986, the TV show Alf debuted on TV, giving the Aldermen from the 23rd a role model and letting me know he was not alone here on earth.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move that the Board approves the minutes of June 30th, 2017.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes. I have from my honor the mayor, the following correspondents. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the St. Louis Convention and Visitors Convention. The appointment of Nora Lasari, General Manager of Marriott Grand Hotel, whose term will expire on November 22, 2019. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruzon, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the St. Louis Convention and Visitors Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I request approval of the mayor's recommendation.
Moved by Alderman from the tenth, entertain a second motion, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second, and Alderwoman from the thirteenth. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Affordable Housing Board. The appointment of John West, who resides in the 28th Ward and whose term will expire on June 30, 2019. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Cruzon, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the, Alderman from the sixteenth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Affordable Housing Board.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I request approval of the mayor's appointment to the Affordable Housing Board.
Moved by Alderman from the sixteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Civil Rights Enforcement Agency Advisory Board. The appointment of Nancy Williams, who resides in the 24th Ward and whose term will expire on November 21, 2019. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruzon, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Civil Rights Enforcement Agency Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the appointment of Nancy Williams to the Civil Rights Enforcement Agency Advisory Board.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
We will dispense with line items seven and eight. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Alderman from the twenty-third.
Mr. President, I would like to take Board Bill 40 off the third reading calendar and move it, well, actually, off third reading, move it to the third reading consent calendar.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Take Board Bill number 40 off of the third reading informal calendar and put it on the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Would anyone like to take any further bills? Alderman from the twenty-second.
Mr. President, I would like to ask the Alderman from the 23rd if he would not place that on the consent calendar and hold it for at least another week in the hopes that there's a parking commission meeting next week where we can actually deal with this issue on that level.
All right. Alderman from the twenty-third, would you like to hold this for another?
I would, I have a lot of trust in the Alderman of the twenty-second to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill number 40 back on the third reading informal calendar.
So noted.
All right, we will dispense with line item 10, first read, Alderman from the eighth.
During summer vacation, I didn't grow 12 inches. I would, I would like to move to perfect Board Bill number 89.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighth, that we perfect Board Bill 89, seconded by Alderwoman from the sixth. Third reading finally passed Board Bill number 89, seconded by Alderwoman from the sixth. Any discussion?
I would renew my motion.
Alderwoman from the first.
Did he first take it off the informal calendar? Did I miss that?
No, he's just, he's just third reading, finally passed it, so that is moving it off the informal calendar.
Usually you do a motion to take it off first, and then you do it.
No, 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 he could just, he could just do just like he just did. He's in order the way he did it just now.
The person just before him, Board Bill number 40, had to take it off the informal calendar, then he was going to do it. So is he just, so I just think he is supposed to do a motion to take it off. Past that, is he putting it on the regular calendar or the consent calendar?
I think he's moving to third read and finally pass it right now.
Consent calendar.
It would, it's, if we third read and finally pass it individually right now, it will be essentially like if it was on the regular third reading calendar.
I think that it's supposed to first be moved onto a calendar so we know what it is. A roll call.
All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the eighth, you recognize to close on Board Bill number, third read and finally passes of Board Bill number 89.
I ask for your favorable approval of Board Bill number 89. Thank you.
All right, it's been moved that we, third read and finally pass Board Bill number 89. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Conway. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Twenty-one, aye votes, one no vote, one abstained, one present.
By vote, you abstained the motion, Alderman from the eighth, and third read, and finally passed Board Bill number 89, with dispensal line item 10, first reading Board Bills.
Board Bill 122, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and on its recommended by the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing a supplemental appropriation, amending on its 70540, commonly referred to as the City Annual Operating Plan for fiscal year 2017 through 2018, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $1,910,000 from revenues accruing to the local use tax fund and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 123, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and on its recommended by the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing the mayor to submit a 2018 annual action plan to United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to apply for funding under the Federal Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program, appropriating the sum of $15,624,398, which the city estimates will be available for the 2018 CDBG program this year. Appropriating the sum of $2,146, which the city estimates will be available for the 2018 home program year, and appropriating the sum of $1,494,620, which the city estimates will be available for the 2018 ESG program year. Appropriating the sum of $1,610,733, which the city estimates will be available for the 2018 HOPWA program year containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 124, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and on its repealing on a 6900 pertaining to the issuance of any package or drink liquor license for premises within the boundaries of the 3rd Ward Liquor Control District in lieu thereof, containing the following supplementary exemptions: renewal of an existing license and establishment of an entertainment district and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 125, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, and on its repealing on a 70573 and in lieu thereof enacting new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor license for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the 27th Ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 126, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and on its adoption pursuant to Intergovernmental Agreement Act for multiple sections, inclusion of the revised statutes of Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental cooperating agreement with the Metropolitan Sewer District for the purpose of sharing certain water data in the possession of the city with the Metropolitan Sewer District for fair and substantial compensation received by the Metropolitan Sewer District, containing a severability clause and a governance clause. Board Bill 127, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, and on its establishing speed bumps at various locations in O'Fallon Park and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first reading.
Alderman from the 23rd, you recognize?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to suspend the rules for the first reading of Board Bills 128 and 129. There is a copy on everyone's desk, 128 and 129.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 23rd that we suspend the rules for purposes of introducing Board Bills 128 and 129, which should be on everyone's desk, and I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the first. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Hubbard? Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Kotar?
Aye.
Alderman Conway?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Valmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz? Alderwoman Murphy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy? Ald... Here, Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson? For introduction. Introduction. Alderwoman Boyd? Was that aye?
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Yes.
Is that aye?
Yeah.
It's aye. Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Kotar?
Aye.
Alderman Valmer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz? Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Green? Alderman Kennedy? Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed? Twenty-four aye votes.
By vote, stand the motion, Alderman from the 23rd, and introduce the Board Bills 128 and 129. Before you read those, Madam Clerk, Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to move to suspend the rules to introduce Resolution 140, which is about election of judges, and the Alderman from the fourth asks his name to be put on it, and Resolution 141, which asks the police chief to come to have a talk with us about whose streets this belong to.
It's been, um, it's been moved, um, you're not requesting unanimous consent.
Oh, no, 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 I just want to suspend the rules to introduce, and actually, both of them. The Resolution 140 is asked to be sent to the Intergovernmental Affairs, and 141 is being asked to be sent to Public Safety. Both chairs have agreed to that request.
Okay. It's been moved by Alderman from the first, entertain a second on the... Sec... Seconded by Alderman from the 26th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolutions 148 and 141. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. It's been a request for previous roll.
Objection, the Alderman from the eighth has opposed, so I don't want to be a previous roll, and I don't want to be on my own objection.
But I'm sorry, I don't know if, you don't, do you object to a previous roll? No, he doesn't.
But I do because I was a no vote, wasn't I on the last previous?
Okay. All right, all right. Perfect. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Kotar?
No.
Alderman Conway? Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Valmer?
No.
Alderwoman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz? Alderwoman Murphy? Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
No.
Alderman Rhodey?
No.
Alderman Kennedy? Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro?
Yes.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd? Alderwoman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Bosley, your vote. Alderman Conway? Alderman Arnowitz? Alderman Kennedy?
Alderman, he said Alderman.
Alderwoman Davis? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Vaccaro? He said aye. Fifteen. Fifteen aye votes, seven no votes.
By vote, you stand the motion, Alderman from the first. Madam Clerk, please place the Resolutions 140 and 141 on the first reading resolution count.
So noted.
All right. Please read the forward for Board Bills 128 and 129 on the first reading count.
Board Bill 128, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, and on its establishing Detention Facility Advisory Commission that shall receive public complaints regarding the City of St. Louis Justice Center and medium security institution detention facilities, and shall at this discretion review and investigate such complaints as well as patterns of issuance, issues and systemic concerns to city's detention facilities and their operations. It is identified and where the commission deems appropriate, make appropriate, make recommendations to the Department of Public Safety, the Board of Aldermen, and the Mayor with respect to the Corrections Division, policy and procedure, training, infrastructure, care, treatment of detainees, and other areas related to detention facilities and their operations. Board Bill 129, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro, and on its to make it unlawful, subject to the exceptions stated herein, for any persons to ride, walk, or otherwise lead a horse or horses along or over public streets, alleys, sidewalks, within the City of St. Louis, and the paths and trails and any extensions thereof within the City of St. Louis. That's the extent of our first reading.
Madam Clerk, please assign 128 to Public Safety.
So noted.
129, the streets.
So noted.
101, the huts.
So noted.
100 to neighborhood development.
So noted.
117, the legislation.
So noted.
Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 122, to the Housing Committee, Board Bill 123, and 101, to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bills 124, 125, and 128, to the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Board Bill 126, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 127 and 129, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 100, and to the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 117. That's the extent of reference to committee.
All right. Second, second reading.
Following Board Bill was reported out of the Streets Committee, Board Bill 118, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and on its recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on the irregular-shaped portion of Chota adjacent to 4001 through 07 Chota in City Block 3957, beginning at Sarah. The following Board Bill was reported out of the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 114, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Vaccaro, and on its adoption pursuant to multiple sections reaffirming the provisions of multiple ordinances establishing a policy for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of our second readings.
We would dispense with line items four... We would dispense with line items, line item 14. Alderman from the 23rd, you recognize?
I would like to suspend the rules and bring Board Bill 114 for final passage. I mean, not final passage, I'm sorry, for perfection. And it, it has to do with, and we're going to be out of compliance anyway, but I think we should still, it was due last week, but it has to do with how we report to the Ethics Commission.
Alderman, at this, it won't, if you suspend the rules next week, it'll get out at the same time because you can't move it past the perfection calendar today, so, um...
I, and I'm, just to correct me, because I thought I would have to have it perfected today so I could have a third read and final pass.
No, you can, you can spend next week on the perfection counter and third read and finally pass it then. But you, but you can't go from the second read and all the way through, so, so you, you won't make it any faster if you would rather wait till next week.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I just thought that under...
All right, thank you. Thanks, Al. Dispense with line items 14 through 19.
Board Bill 1, I mean, Board Bill 89, report of enrollment.
Through 18, report of enrollment.
Board Bill 89.
All other business being suspended, President shall an open session affix this signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 140.
Alderwoman from the first.
I'm sorry.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the first, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution number 140.
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Oh, that's all right.
Okay. Um, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd ask for first, uh, that Board Bill, oh, not Board Bill, Resolution 140 be sent to the, whatever, which one is this? Intergovernmental Affairs?
It's been moved by Alderman from the first that we send Resolution 140 to Intergovernmental Affairs. I entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the fourth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution 140 to Intergovernmental Affairs.
So noted.
I, Mr. President, so...
Hold on, I'm sorry. Resolution 141.
Resolution 141, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus.
Alderwoman from the first, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 141.
Mr. President, members of the board, I want 141, I move that 141 also be sent to Public Safety. And I don't want it read, but I do want to speak to why I think this is so important, if I may.
Yes, you, you have it right there.
Um, Mr. President, members of the board, I was appalled to watch a video of our police officers in the streets uh, saying whose streets are our streets. I grew up in a time when I believed that the streets belonged to the people, not to the police, and that's a police state. I am still pro-police. I openly tell people that I grew up with the police, but I need some clarification about how our city is being policed. So, Board Bill 141 asks the police chief, the acting police chief, to please come over and have a conversation with us about what's going on and about... It has always been my belief that the police are here to serve and protect. If that has changed, I want to know that, and that is why I've introduced Resolution 141, not Board Bill, I'm sorry, uh, so that we can have a conversation with our police chief as legislators.
Okay. Would you like to request unanimous consent or send it to Public Safety?
I want to send it to Public Safety, please.
All right. It's been moved by Alderman from the first that we send Resolution 141, seconded by Alderman from the 15th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution 141 to Public Safety.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
We have none.
Ms. Lane, it's unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Friday, September the 29th, full board meeting, 10 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcement.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 14th.
Good morning, colleagues, and, Mr. President, I would like to announce that the Bosnian Festival will take place Sunday at Crondelet Park at the Lake Boathouse. It starts at 11 a.m. You're all invited. Come and have some good food and enjoy some of our multicultural experience here in the city. Also, the Strange Folks Festival, which, go ahead. Okay. Which is a craft festival. I know it sounds kind of like, what, what's that about at, at Crondelet Park? I'm sorry to steal your thunder, Alderman, from the 13th and the 11th, but I figured since I was talking about Crondelet Park, I'd do it anyway. That goes Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so you can swing by the Bosnian Fest and hit them both. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. We also have with us Ollie Stewart from Southside Wellness Center, my former committee woman. Let's give her a big round of applause. And of course, our license collector, Mavis Thompson. Let's give her a bigger round of applause. Alderman from the 22nd.
Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to have a street hearing at 9 o'clock a.m. on Tuesday. So anybody that has a bill in streets, we will hear your bills that day.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. Tomorrow at 10 a.m. on the corner of St. Ferdinand and Sarah, we'll be opening, having a ribbon cutting for Alva Boyce Senior Daycare Facility, a new facility will be built on that corner, so Fort Ward is looking for, looking good.
Perfect, all right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to announce that we'll have a Transportation Committee meeting on next Thursday at 10 a.m.
Okay. Alderman from the 25th, I can't tell if you're there. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the 12th be excused for necessary absence.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 18th, I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by the Alderman from the 24th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, September 29th, 10 a.m.
Moved by the Alderman from the 18th. Seconded by the Alderman from the 6th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stand adjourned.